We will call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two if you could call roll please.
Councilmember Canfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedall.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I am here. For the agenda tonight, item four, letter D, the brownfield redevelopment. The public hearing and the resolution need to be separate items, so I'd like to change Resolution 2518 to be item E under old business.
With that changed, I'll make the motion to accept the decision. The agenda as presented.
And I'll second.
Motion in the second, any other changes tonight? Sue.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedall.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right. Citizen comments, items on the agenda.
Honesty, go ahead. I'm here today to address the truck traffic at Monroe.
Can we get just your name and your address?
No, my name is Ron Stephens, I live at 612 North Monroe.
Okay.
Been there for about 11 years now. The truck traffic doesn't stop up and down that road. Big semis, they're not allowed there. The police have posted signs, they've posted the routes, to no avail. I've called safety departments, I've called dispatch, I've called the DOT. You know, they don't give me bouncing up and down that road. I've been tailgated by them going home. My suggestion, why don't we take this block right here, just one block, turn it one way, going south up into 21. It would alleviate some of the traffic, they wouldn't be able to turn there, they'd have to use the truck route that we just spent how much money on to repair. You could also put like parallel or diagonal parking there. You get rid of the left turn lane out on 21, you could put parking right along there. You get rid of half the left turn lane there, right here in front of the city hall. That would open up more parking. I think it'd be a good thing all around. I just, I want the trucks to stop. We've got three daycare centers on there, out on that road. Kids are playing on the road all the time, there's cars parked around. I drive 20 miles an hour down that road because they give me the willies. And these trucks can barrel in down 30, 40 miles an hour. It's not safe.
Thanks for coming in, Ron. We did discuss this after you came to the one coffee with the council, it didn't happen, but in comments that night, passed along your comments and stuff, so we did discuss this a little bit. And we are kind of looking at possibly changing things, and that was a good point you made, and I appreciate you coming tonight and letting us hear it again.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Steve Doyle, 706 Riverside Drive. Lived in the home there on Riverside, on Riverside Drive for just under 30 years. Our backyard is Hudson Street. And since the repaving of Hudson Street, which is, which is great, I've noticed that the traffic speed has increased. It's really getting, you know, a little bit out of hand. North Hudson is 100%, nearly 100% residential. There's a city park, and with traffic traveling 10 miles over, 15 miles over, even 20 miles over the speed limit, that deserves some respect. It's all, you know, residential. There's five kids just on my block that are under the age of 12. So, I do have, you know, help that with solution. I think that there should be a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign on each block, north and south in each direction. There's one sign at the first block at the light. There's a lot of commotion at the light, left turns, red blinking, or yellow flashing lights and so forth and so on. I think that first 25 mile an hour sign going north probably isn't even seen. There's one more sign at the fourth block. And at the seventh block where I live, that sign is just completely disregarded. We're moving, we're 35, we're 40 miles an hour out of town. So I think a few more signs each block to be reminded, and also the electronic signs, the signs that were on Main Street. I'm not sure why they're not being used anymore, I think they're great. When it's flashing red and it says slow down, I think, I think that's fantastic. But I think North Hudson, we could use, we could use the same thing. Thank you.
I have two of those signs that are going to be purchased, I'm waiting for the other customers to come back, and they are going to be in North Hudson in that, in that general area.
I will say, living on that side by Richard's Parkway, I do, I do see you guys out there feeling home, parking a lot, and I think they're catching a lot of people coming into town, so, but this concerns, sounds like going out of town. Okay, anybody else? All right. Old business, item four, item A, city income tax. Mike, over.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In January, I made a presentation on preliminary findings in regards to the city income tax for street improvements. At the time, I questioned the council if this was an avenue they were considering that it needed a formalized study. In the winter, I was directed to proceed with a study in the future, and the council approved $15,000 in this year's budget for the study. Once the budget was approved, I reached out to three firms in Michigan known best for conducting these studies, and met with them to seek a proposal. In essence, each firm was asked to project, to project income tax generated by residents, tax paid by non-residents, corporate income tax, impact of any millage rate reduction to offset the income tax, an estimate of collection rates, assessment of administrative costs and future projections. Two of the firms submitted proposals. The three firms I saw proposals from were Great Lakes Consulting out of Eaton Rapids, their proposal was $9,750, Municipal Analytics out of Ann Arbor, $14,500, and Plant and Moran who did not submit a proposal. I've researched all three firms, and I believe the lowest cost provider is the best to handle the study. Great Lakes Consulting consists of two individuals highly respected in governmental finance. Mitch Bean, who's here tonight, along with Bob Klein. Mitch Bean formerly served as the Director of the Michigan House Fiscal Agency, a non-partisan assistant to the Michigan House of Representatives, and Robert Klein was formerly, was formerly the State Treasurer for the State of Michigan, serving under Governor Grant. Most recently, both developed a city income tax study for the city of Wyoming. With both communities' proximity to Grand Rapids, much of the data they compiled and/or project was recently gathered during the Wyoming study. Want to make it very clear that this study is by no means a commitment to move forward on a city income tax. However, this study will provide accurate information in making a sound policy decision as to fund our street improvement needs. Just as an aside, in the last 25 years, no communities until late have approved a city income tax. The last two, this past November, City of Benton Harbor approved a city income tax, and East Lansing just approved one last week. So, just to, just an aside. Our preliminary street assessment management plan projects we need to spend $1 million per year for the next 10 years in order to get our streets from 85% poor to 92% rated well. The city operates on a $3 million general fund. Our current revenue structure does not generate the $10 million over time needed to address this. The road tax increase from 2015, the gas tax, is projected, we will get about $200,000 gradually phased out from fiscal year 2016 to fiscal year 21. So, the gas tax that we're getting increased, it's not solving our issues. In fact, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but if we decided we were to fund, put no money for police services, we could utilize $775,000 annually from general, from the general fund for street improvements. However, we would need to rely on the county sheriff's district car and/or the Michigan State Police. We also would not have code enforcement if we did that. In addition, due to the state of Michigan constitutional requirements, the most we can finance through bonding is approximately $7.3 million. This being said, if the council wants to address street improvements, all, all options need to be thoroughly evaluated. Mr. Bean and Mr. Klein are here this evening to answer any questions you might have, and the resumes and the proposals in your packet. Also, I also just gave you a distribution schedule from the approved gas tax that was made in 2015, showing how much of an increase we will receive each year from 2016 to 2021. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approval proposal from Great Lakes Consulting to conduct a city income tax study at a cost not to exceed $9,750.
If we go ahead and approve the 9750, what is the timeframe of us getting back to that study?
It's our intent to have it in the next three months.
Are you able to get just both the points of what this study covers?
Sure. I guess, Mitch, Mitch, Bob, just help me if I, if I miss something, but one of the things that we're going to basically do is we're going to do an estimate based on census projections for Lowell residents. There's, there's data sets that they have access to that they can probably give a better accurate, accurate assessment than I actually provided you this January. Also, they can take, they can also determine, through that study, determine how many people actually pay city income taxes in another community, so they can take, they can do that estimate as well, they can figure that out for us also. So they'll be able to, to look at city residents, city residents who pay in two jurisdictions, they'll be able to do an estimate on what non-residents would pay based off census data. They could do an estimate, they would do an estimate on corporate income tax if we so chose. They have, they have data sets available to do that. Also, what they would do is they would prove up, come back to us with assessments as to, if we reduce the millage rate from 15.7 mils through different trends, we could go as low as 11 mils, 12 mils, 13 mils, 14, whatever. We probably want to look back at least four or five mils to see what those assessments would be. Also, they will also provide you with the pros and cons of doing that, and they can provide you various collection rates, because with a city income tax, one of the problems you're going to have is collection. You're not going to get 100% of what you collect, you're probably going to get somewhere between 75 to 85%. And you're going to have an administrative cost. And then also the pros and cons of what, of what would need to happen if you move forward. So there's a lot of, at the end of the day, we may look at the study and decide this is not what we want to do, but we need to look ahead. We need $10 million to fix these streets, and we're not, we're not doing anything, anything, I mean, unless we start completely obliterating, eliminating services, that's the only way we can fix our streets, but then you're basically robbing Peter with paintball. So, and I don't know how much the state is going to be able to, you know, is going to be able to help us solve our issue.
I don't think it's in the study yet, we've already budgeted for the money, keen and under, I think we'll be budgeting, isn't it?
Yeah, we've budgeted 15 grand, right?
I think we got, listen, we're, we're digging out of a pretty sizable hole here, and the streets are the number one issue, anybody really that you talk to. And we're 30 years behind. I don't, I'm not, listen, I'm not for the city income tax, but I'm for the study that will tell us how much of an option it would be. What do you, you don't have anything to lose from getting questions answered before you have questions.
Right.
That's what we've always said. You don't get as much information as you can before you make a decision on anything. So. Perry.
City incomes, does that have to then go to a vote from the people in order to be approved?
It would be, it would require a vote of people, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do you have any other questions for Mike? Or for Mr. Bean and Mr. Klein? I'll look for a motion to approve the proposal from Great Lakes Consulting.
Salute, support.
Discussion or changes? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedall.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
All right, item number B, LARA commitment. Michael.
In approximately 2013, the Lowell Area Recreation Authority met with the City Council regarding a $25,000 commitment toward the construction of the last phase of the trail. In the meeting, there was discussion regarding a commitment of $25,000 from all three communities. Also, there was consensus to move forward, however, no formalized action was taken. LARA is in the process of finalizing their grant requests with MDOT and DNR for the trail. As part of this, LARA is requesting the city take action to approve a $25,000 commitment for the project. In addition, this commitment will assist LARA in their request for funding through Fred Meyer Trail Foundation. This commitment would not be until fiscal year 2021. According to LARA, no resolution is needed for this action, however, they would like City Council approval. This would allow me to set aside funding for this during the fiscal year 2021 budget process. The city has continued to show commitment to LARA completing this project. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve a $25,000 commitment for the Lowell Area Recreation Authority trail for the fiscal year 2021.
Just to clarify, Perry, I'm 98% sure the townships are chipping in 5,000 each, and the city is chipping in 25, is the way it was set up. It's not 25 each. Their budgets were smaller at the time. I think 5,000 is what they agreed to.
You know what, I think you're right, I do remember Mark telling me that. Yep. My mistake.
Nope, just clarification, but it all looks good. I would make a motion to approve the $25,000 commitment for the 2021 budget. Forward.
Motion in the second, any other discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedall.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Item C, sidewalk update. Michael.
Rich is here tonight to provide an update on the sidewalks program that we're currently working on.
Excellent. So we started this conversation of sidewalk enforcement back in February, and we brought it back to council around March. In May of this year, we actually had DPW go out and do an inspection on the east side, so the whole entire east side is inspected. And then we got into construction season, so that slowed down our progress on the sidewalk project. But just recently, myself and Chief Bucel went back out and re-inspected everything because we thought we were being a little too harsh on residents, so we actually cut back some of the replacements that we had initially identified. And so to this point now, we're, we've got a nice list developed full of all the deficiencies and recommended actions. That's going to be turned over to code enforcement, and then the letter will be going out very soon. And that will get us up to step three in a six-step process that we defined back in March. So I think, you know, now that the construction season's over, we're going to be back on it, and we'll focus on that for a little bit, and hopefully get the letters out and get this process smoothed out too. Because this is the first run for all of us, it's going to be new for everybody, and there's going to be some bumps, of course, but we're getting knocked out.
One thing I think we talked about a little bit, we need to take care of our own stuff before those letters go out. We have sidewalks downtown that are two and three inch, some of the stuff on the bridge, the red decorative stuff has settled, and before we go throw in rocks, we gotta, we live in a glass house, we need to take care of our own stuff, I think. There's some stuff in front of the Strand Theater.
Sorry, I jumped on you, I'm sorry.
But just, it is a good thing to do, people can trip and get hurt, but it's something that we need to, we need to be on good ground ourselves before we start sending out letters, at least is my opinion.
Well, I think we went through and a lot was done, was it about two years ago? I know.
The DDA, yeah, we went through the DDA last year, I think it was, and we identified everything there, but we did not do the bridge.
Okay.
So Greg is right about that, excuse me, Mr. Canfield is right about that. There are some trip hazards on the bridge. In keeping with the theme of sidewalks, we also have that sidewalk grant that we have to expend too, and that's one of those that we identified that we would use that grant money for, so fix those things downtown in parks and on city property. So those are, those are working in parallel right now. I'm actually getting ready to do a RFP released probably in the next couple of weeks.
Rich, did you have a number? Did you have any idea on the number on the east side? I mean, is it high, is it?
I think about 40, 45 maybe that we've identified. And not a good thing is replaced, some of it's going to be a pass, some of it's going to be a grind, but a pretty good amount of.
Properties, not the squares.
Right, properties, about 40, 45 properties, right.
Just depends if it's your property here or not.
Right.
And then after that, how long before we're started on the west side?
Well, we're going to try to squeeze it in, as you folks know, we're going to be losing a member of the DPW, so that might impact our workload a little bit. We'd like to get the west side inspected till this fall.
Just a quick question, how do you determine what needs grinding, patching, replacing? I've got pink paint on my sidewalk.
Okay. What we're looking for, the bad actor is the trip hazard, so by state law, two inches is a trip hazard. If it's anything less than that, we think it's a trip hazard, then we can probably grind it. If it's multiple cracks that are pretty open, we can probably fill them. So we have a whole list identified from our conversation with council back in March.
Now, is this something I can repair myself, and I don't need to worry about getting a bill?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We want you to fix it, actually.
Okay.
We don't want to take part in that.
Right.
We just want to identify for you.
It's about a half inch, and I just, I walk the sidewalk up and down every, about every three days, and mine's the only one that's got pink paint on it, so I'm kind of curious. I've seen some, you know, ledges.
Which rivers?
612 North Monroe.
I'll go right up for you.
You should be proud, you're the best.
The special sidewalk.
I know.
Well, you have to grind that, and then for your trees too.
I've tried contacting the owner of the property right there on the corner of Marsack and Monroe. It just got bought up and it was rental, I've talked to his contractor, I've left my number, I've tried to get hold of him, to no avail. He has a tree that's dying, the trunk is splitting, and when it does finally split, it's probably going to take out half of my house or the power for the whole block. What can you do about that? Can you make him cut that damn thing down?
Well, I think you've just given your complaint to code enforcement.
What side, DeBoer?
It's on the Monroe side, the tree. The can that's in is big and it's falling apart. I mean, we got six inch limbs falling out of the tree right now. I appreciate that. I'll either grind that, or I might even try to water cut it down, get the concrete to level.
There you go. Cool. As long as the trip hazard is gone, that's all.
Who said how many councils not fly?
Rich, I got one more question for you, and that was a good point that you made. So when you send these things out to people, I've had people that were walking and they were, I don't want to say complaining, but some of the trees over the sidewalks, people can't walk because they're too tall, so.
We had to adapt to the west.
Very good, so that's going to be part of that process as well.
Well, I can point out to you while you're on.
No, I'll go with this, too, I might email you tomorrow.
Rich, do we have a timeline when we can get our city sidewalks in compliance?
The city own? So that's going to go out as an RFP, and then that's all going to depend on how fast I can get your responses back and get that project approved. It'd be nice to get everything done this fall, I can't guarantee everything though because we're doing kind of eight in a year, and an RFP process through the city can sometimes take a couple months.
Do the bridges fall under that too? I mean, because that's technically state property.
Yeah, we'll work with them that, and we'll just ask their permission to fix that.
Okay.
And you did say right in front of the bargains for the old.
The Strand Theater there, there's the decorative brick that's been missing for a couple years, and there's another spot where a curb, or a curb stop got worked on, and just needs 18 inches of concrete there, just a couple little spots. I just know that.
You're right.
You know, if we're going to be sending letters out, it is significant amounts, so I'd just like to see ours updated here.
Absolutely.
Anything else with the sidewalk just?
So just one clarification on the bridges. On the bridges themselves, there's no red decorative brick. Bridges are straight concrete. Between the bridges, there's the decorative, uh, brick. Brick. So that would be city.
It's, it's empty right away regardless, but we have permission to get it, we'll get permission to get it and fix it.
I know, but we're doing work ourselves, but I mean, I don't know how to do it. Okay, anything else with sidewalks, anybody? Good? All right, item D, first item for the brownfield redevelopment is the public hearing. Michael.
Tonight is the fourth step for establishing the city of Lowell Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. As I stated previously, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority would be designated through the entire city. Properties that meet the standards to be eligible for brownfield tax credits would be eligible to, for the incentives that would be provided through the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Kind of explain what those might be. For, for example, if you have a contaminated property that you want to redevelop, you can utilize the future tax capture to help with the mitigation costs to redevelop the site. For example, if, for example, if you had a property that you wanted to redevelop and had oil, or you had underground storage containers that had gasoline, if there was a contamination or something in it, all of those costs could be eligible under the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to mitigate those costs for investment. Also, for example, if you had lead and asbestos in your building, if, if it was a, if it was costly and it was worthwhile, you could utilize the tax capture for, for something of that nature to mitigate those costs if you were to redevelop that property. One of the advantages about the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority tax capture is, is the only tax capture in Michigan that does allow school tax capture. All, if there was a, if there was a proposal for a brownfield redevelopment, it's called a 381 work plan. If the Brownfield Authority would develop a 381, if they approve a 381 work plan, not only is it captured, can you capture the local tax capture, there is an opportunity at the state level to get approval from the Michigan Strategic Fund to capture the state educational tax as well. So you can actually capture the full school capture for the amount of years needed to, to, for the cost to mitigate the development. It is, it is, it is a very, it is a very well-used tool, it's probably one of the best economic incentive tools there is in Michigan if you have projects that fall in that. Not saying that we have those, we may or may not, but I felt it was important that the council establishes authority to have this available to, to a developer if there was an opportunity that came available. So, you'll have a public hearing tonight, and then if, after the public hearing, there'll be a resolution creating the authority and establishing the downtown development authority as your board, who would be responsible for the Brownfield, for the Brownfield Authority. And I'm recommending that the council does establish the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
So first we'll open the public hearing on the brownfield. And we have any, just public comment, right?
Yeah, public hearing. Open the public hearing, close the public hearing.
Any comments on the brownfield redevelopment? Council comments at all on it?
This is the record, Perry, how many times you've been to the.
I don't know. So the, is that the complete city? I mean, from, or is it just Main Street, or is it just downtown development, or does it cover my house if I have a oil tank in the driveway or whatever?
Well, we designated the whole city as the zone, however, it would only pertain to commercial, well, commercial or maybe mixed-use development. I mean, if you're doing your home, I actually, I'm not sure that like a residential property can, can capture that.
Okay.
Unless it was like a mixed-use development or something of that nature.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else before we close the public hearing? All right. We'll close this public hearing now. Move to item B, recommendation for Resolution 2518 establishing the Brownfield Authority.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2518.
I'll support.
Oh, and just to clarify, sorry, the members of the DDA will be the Brownfield Board as well.
That's correct.
So you're not establishing a second board for adding any additional workload, anybody? Motion in the second, any other discussion or questions? Sue.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedall.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right. Old business closed up, new business, item five, number A, Pink Arrow Pride Day Resolution. Michael.
For the 11th straight year, the Lowell High School sports teams have initiated a cancer awareness and fundraising event called Pink Arrow Pride Day to be held on Thursday, October, August 30th, 2018. Players will wear pink jerseys in games being held that day. Funds are being raised for Gildas Club of Lowell and Lowell Community Wellness for Pink Arrow Family Support. I'm recommending that the Lowell City Council adopt Resolution 2618 proclaiming Thursday, August 30th, 2018 as Pink Arrow Pride Day, Arrow Force 11 of the state of Lowell.
Arrow Force 11 in the City of Lowell.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 2618 proclaiming Thursday, August 30th, 2018 as Pink Arrow Pride Day. Arrow Force 11 in the City of Lowell. I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salsmido.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
All right. Item B, where's the meeting delegate? Michael?
The 2018 Municipal Employees Retirement System Annual Meeting is being held this year on October 5th, 4th and 5th, 2018 at the Amway Grand Plaza Hotel in Grand Rapids. Council needs to appoint employer delegate to the annual meeting. Bails were distributed to the employees and they selected Sharon Morris as their delegate to represent the City of Lowell employees. Scott Fosberg was also selected to be the alternate delegate. The city needs to appoint an employer delegate, and that would be me. Recommending that the city council appoint me as the employer delegate for the 2018 reg annual meeting.
So.
I'll support.
Any discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Salsmido.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Let me hear your word.
Yes. Item D, water, oh no, what are we at here? Item C, ordinance 18-4, section 19 amendment, Sue.
At the meeting of the June 11th, 2018, the planning commission reviewed and recommended the city council adopt ordinance 18-04. This is an ordinance to amend section 19.02, location of parking, to amend subsections B, C, D, and E in sections 19.03, parking area application and designing, to amend subsections D, G, and K of section 19.04, parking restrictions, to delete subsections J of section 19.04, parking restrictions, and to add subsections L and M to section 19.04. Parking restrictions to amend section 19.05, non-residential parking deferment, to amend section 19.06, parking lap and landscaping, and to amend section 19.07, table of off-street parking requirements of chapter 19. Off-street parking and zoning of appendix A zoning of the code of ordinances for the City of Lowell. And please note that a red line copy is provided and Andy Moore from Williams &amp; Works is present to answer any of your questions.
Andy, maybe you've got any of the major changes? Anyway, it's a nice list of sections, subsections.
Sure, yes.
What does it mean for us?
So, yeah, as you guys probably know, the planning commission has been working on the last probably nine to 12 months or so, just kind of going through the zoning ordinance chapter by chapter and reviewing it section by section. As we went through parking, there were a few objectives that we had in mind when we did this. A lot of this was just clarifying certain provisions and also building in some flexibility in the standards of the zoning ordinance. There have been many instances in the past where we've had somebody that wants to expand or modify their business, and due to the parking requirements in the zoning ordinance, they, you know, the city is forcing them to provide more parking than they think they need, or something like that. And so also in those instances, our objective here, I think, is to provide a little bit more flexibility for the planning commission to apply some discretion and allow either a reduction or an increase in the minimum number of parking spaces necessary. So just, I'm going to hit some of the highlights here in going through this red line copy that was provided in your packet. In section 1902, this is on the first page, under subsection B there, this is what we've been doing presently, but in a downtown area. The property area in the downtown where the mixed-use district, which is just to the east and north of downtown, can accommodate spaces for their minimums or not requiring those with downtown properties that are basically fully built out with buildings anyways to somehow provide parking on site or get some kind of variance. That's something we've been doing for a while and it's worked out very well for the city. And so that's something that the language in here kind of simplifies and clarifies what we're asking in that instance. On page two, this is in section 1903, subsection C, we made a couple of fairly minor adjustments in section C and D. And C pertains to the height of the lighting fixtures, just caps the height of 20 feet instead of 15. And then we also have a reference to the section of the zoning ordinance that pertains to lighting. So whenever someone wants to light a parking lot or a commercial building, we have standards about how strong light can be and how, so the light is not shining onto adjacent properties and things of that nature. And similarly, under subsection D, we reduced a required setback for a parking area. So what we had before is a requirement that off-street spaces had to be set back at least 20 feet from the property line, which sounds pretty good in theory until you're in a downtown area like we are now, and 20 feet really heats up a lot of real estate. You require a 20-foot buffer all the way around the property. So we do value the greenery and the trees and the streetscaping there, but 20 feet felt like a bit much. So we reduced that down to 10 feet. A few other changes that we made, most of them are fairly minor. You'll see on page four, starting at the top, this is section 1904. We did provide for shared parking. So instances when you have a building or a property that contains multiple uses, or a mixed-use building or something like that, we authorize the planning commission in its discretion to allow for a reduction in the amount of parking required. What happens presently, and we haven't had this a lot recently, but what would happen presently if this came in is that you would just take the minimum required for one use, add it to the minimum required for the other use, and then that's how much parking you have to have. That sounds fine, but it often also results frequently in a lot of parking that you don't need. So in some cases, you'll have uses in buildings where the peak parking for one use is completely different from the peak parking in a different use. So this shared parking arrangement and the allowance of a 50% reduction in the amount of the required parking really allows for less parking on the site overall, but still meeting the needs of all the tenants of that property. Under subsection L of that same section, we've allowed an applicant's option, some requirement for buildings or uses of 20 or more off-street spaces, up to five of those spaces can be replaced with light parking. And then under item M, in kind of furtherance of this theme of flexibility, we're also allowed the planning commission during the site plan review process again to work with applicants to either authorize an increase or decrease in those requirements. You know, we've seen several times lately where an applicant will say, "Look, I just don't need 40 parking spaces." And we say, "Okay, that kind of makes sense." They know their business a little bit better than we do in most cases. And so in those instances, the planning commission can either allow for deferred parking or just reduce the minimum altogether. That's pretty much the highlights of that section, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have anything specific that you need clarification on. I can address those.
I think this is great. Thanks for making it flexible and allowing the planning commission to have some input on things. Not everything is not always black and white.
Right.
And it's just, we need to do what we can to make our community friendly to people that want to invest here. This is very helpful. Thank you.
Any other question?
I know, yes, but under 1902, the parking areas and driveways shall be hard-surfaced. To me, that's still vague. Does that account for crushed asphalt? Because there are still some gravel driveways in town, and I know there's been some people that have brought in crushed asphalt over the years and put that in.
Yeah, I mean, the primary objective there is to create something that's dustless. And so, you know, for the most part, that is considered a dustless surface, I think. But what we're really trying to do there is to get away from just plain gravel, which can be dusty, especially in dry times in the summer like we are now.
Good. Anything else for Andy? Thanks, Andy. All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the changes for ordinance 18-04.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 18-04. I'll support.
Okay, any other question? Sue.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salsmido.
Yes.
All right. Item B, water sewer distribution position. Michael, Rich.
With the recent resignation of Jeff Van Seder as the water and sewer distribution supervisor, the city now has a vacancy in this position available in two weeks. This task is necessary to the city. However, the city needs to look at what measures it must take to move forward. The city administration needs guidance from the city council on how they'd like to proceed going forward as discussion on this topic is needed. Basically, what I'm asking is, currently, this has been a full-time position that the city's had in-house for many years, probably ever since we introduced the water and sewer system back in the seventies. However, the question is, is this the way we want to continue going forward? Do we want to continue having a full-time employee, or would we want to consider contracting the position out? Our neighboring jurisdiction, Lowell Township, does that for the management of their system. Number of communities across the state have done that as well. It poses a cost to privatization by doing it, but I need to know what the council would want to see going forward because this is a, one of the issues, one of the concerns I have with this position is Jeff was a younger individual who took on a position and he went to a larger community. And one of the concerns we have here, not just this position, but every position, is that we're trained around for one of the metropolitan communities in Grand Rapids. And my concern is in three, four years, we fill this position in-house, we're doing the same thing over again. Does the council want to do that? Does the council want me to at least evaluate other options available? At the end of the day, we may find that bringing it back in-house is the way to go. But I need direction from the council as to how they would want me to consider this also as we go forward, so.
Does the union have any concerns about this?
I'm sure they do. However, at this point in time, this is an employer's right. What the union contract says is we can't take their work and subcontract it. At this point, there isn't, when this person vacays, the party union isn't there. So we do have the ability to evaluate this.
Do you have any idea what the cost is of privatizing this compared to the?
That I don't. That's my concern. I need to research that. I probably want to go reach out to a couple of the companies that do it. I know Suez has done a number across the state. Infrastructure alternatives have done a number in this area. I believe Flesing and Brink's also have done as well for a couple of communities in the state. It might be a wise idea to look at that. My concern is if we're only saving about $10,000 a year, I would say just keep it in-house. But I mean, if we're seeing substantial savings that we don't know about, we have to look at it. I mean, this is something that we have to think about. As the city continues to move forward and costs are going up, we're having a hard time. It's always a challenge to contain costs.
Right. This is certainly an opportunity to look at it and not be abide with the union.
Right.
But as someone that interacts with Jeff's position quite a bit, as a plumbing contractor in town, when you have an emergency, it's nice when there's someone that is somewhat close and available because when Mrs. Homemaker calls you and your basement's filling up with water and we're waiting two hours for somebody from two hours away to get here, the response time is going to be critical. Infrastructure alternatives takes care of Lowell Township and Virgin's Township, I believe.
And all of Virgin by Lowell.
And I think that would allow us to keep someone in the area that would be fairly available for response time. But it is a revenue thing. If we can certainly, if we can save $50,000 a year, and it's probably a no-brainer to do it, but.
Hey, now that you look at the salary, what you're putting in a pension possibly and all the things that have happened over a 20-year period of employee.
You look in and you figure, when you throw benefits in with that position, it's probably another $25,000, $20,000, $25,000 in addition, plus training and all those costs.
Other things too. And, you know, we gave a raise recently to try to keep that person here, and now they're gone, so it is not a well one.
Right. And unfortunately, I mean, we, unfortunately, you know, some people, they're going to want to go to the bigger community because they feel there's more opportunity than there is in this market. We're going to probably, we're going, this isn't going to be the first time this happened, and it won't be the last time this happens. But how, I mean, how often do we want to be the one where we bring somebody in, invest in them, and then two, three years down the road, they go somewhere else? Is that something the city wants to continue to do?
And I know we don't have a lot of young guys working for us currently, but is that something in-house we could, anybody that might be groomed for that position?
There is another license holder that was here for a substantial long time that could be interested in taking that role if we have stocks in first. I have other concerns, I'll break it up while I'm talking. This individual does do on-call work, and this position does also help us with snow work. This individual mostly deals in utilities, underground stuff. Probably also do utility marketing, listed marketing. They also come in and say plan reviews, and they respond to homeowners' calls, of course, like you mentioned, when there's meter change or water issues too. So I agree with what you say, that it's nice to have someone there, but we also have to be mindful of the expense of this person too. So it's a good opportunity to look at it. It'd be sad to lose the position. And believe me, I'm also lobbying the individual still to rescind his resignation and stay with us, so.
Rich, how many licenses do you need to hold for that position then?
Really, we need one and backup, so.
Do we have a backup?
Yes.
We do?
I'm not sure what his license is, though. If he's at the level he should be for that position, I got to do some.
That position requires an S2 license.
S2. And I think we have an S3. So it would involve getting the next level.
If you, listen, it doesn't hurt to look at it, right? No, it's time to look at it. So we look at it and we find out there's no cost-saving and no oversight. Because you're bringing in an outside person, we're not out anything.
It's just going to get a tough position to fill. There's such a shortage of people. Right. It's tough for you, isn't it? It's my other concern.
Well, you find out, the worst case is you find out you saved a ton of money, and they're responsible for staffing that position during the term of their contract, right? So you don't got to worry about losing somebody in three years because it's not our problem. It could be great, it could be not great, but there's no better time, I don't think, to look at it.
Would his last name be Nathalie First one, would you like to think about having somebody on staff that could fill that position or subcontract or whatever?
Yeah, ASAP, we really can't absorb a ton of his duties. Everybody's pretty busy right now, and so it's going to be difficult for us. And we may have to even contract it out for the short term just to make sure things get done. But ASAP is a whole.
We want to get a little way on this now.
I think there's come better time to look at all the options we have. I don't know, you don't need anything from us, right?
No, I just wanted to make sure if we do something, we look at it, we're bringing it to you, and we'll be supportive.
I think there's enough faith in both of you guys to know that what you bring to us.
See Jeff have a lunch somewhere, pick up the tab, try to convince him.